Slightly after 7:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order for Thursday, March 28, 2019. And our first item on the agenda is to meet with Mr. Will Purcell. He's our deputy fire chief, to discuss better communication and coordination between the planning board and the fire department.
Howdy.
How are you, Will?
All right. Good to see you. Again, I'd like to introduce the fire chief and the fire chief, Michael Bryant.
Hi, Mike.
You just happened to be here today.
Nice to meet you.
In the station, and I just wanted to reach out to you, gentlemen, that, you know, we both knew at our jobs, and there's, you know, sometimes where there's a lot going on, and we want to be involved, probably more than having a pass and so forth, but we're not chasing our tails after certain things, and if it should keep it simple, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And keep the line of communications open, anything you need from us, you know, I'm saying that, that's why I wanted to stop by and to say hello, and to just, obviously, we know each other, but just haven't been in this circumstances before. We want to be involved a lot of time with, you know, especially with, you know, access to these buildings and so forth, for consideration for us. I know you'd like to take that into consideration in time, but you definitely want, you know, be at the table for this, you know.
Yes, sir. Have you been, you get notified when the building department gets buildings, and they're progressing, and they're building them?
Yes, no, we haven't just...
Do you typically get tours through the buildings to...
We try, usually it's, we have to be proactive about.
Yes.
There's been a few where we received notice for, like, essentially an open house, like a walk room, a view walk room. Others that we have to be more proactive against, to seek it out. We drive by, notice some property, and part of that is because we kind of, you know, these things take months and months to complete.
Yes.
And I came in the middle of the process, so, you know, it's catch-up for me. So, within the next year, I'll be able to deal with the process and see if it's working.
I do that for a living. I build buildings, and I always contact the building depart, the fire department, to let them know that, you know, I'd like to have them come through and walk through the building, and see what we have, and quite often, there are cases when you folks want to see, you folks want to see a...
That will come inside, and all the stuff you're gonna have to bear with me.
That's okay. It's your time. We're just having a chat. When you guys would like to see a PDA, because some of the buildings that are built, being built nowadays are so tight, and so close, that you don't have the, you don't have the communication between yourselves inside the building and the fire department.
Right.
Big problem.
Yeah, that is a big problem, yes. And most places require to have a BDA on, in the building.
Right.
That, I believe, is awesome. I built an assisted living facility over in Easton, and we made sure that we had that all up and placed. I built a Walmart down in Cromwell, Connecticut, and it wasn't on the drawings, and the fire department came walking through, and they said, "Wait, I don't have any service to my station in here." So, we had to retrofit it in, bring it in, from, you know, after it was all built, which caused some...
More, more, so...
Yes, it does.
And that's kind of why we're there, too, so we don't have events like that, or, you know, or we're making demands out of the fact, because it's just not, it's not great for them or you.
No, but it's something that should be required.
No doubt, no doubt.
You know, and I think that should be brought to the attention of, you know, the building department, so they know as well.
Definitely, good communication with them, but just basically introduce ourselves, that we're here, we're all to come to a meeting if we need those. Just that's it. That's just simple, as simple as that, you know what I mean? I don't know if the chief's got anything else, but...
Yes, sir.
No, just wanted to show my face, and looking forward to working with you, and seeing if we can do to do, to make the process better over here.
It's nice to meet you, and you should be getting site plans for any projects that we have going on.
Yeah, yeah.
You should have, you know, last couple of days. I mean, for instance, we have a great example.
Yes, this one here.
You got that?
Yeah, I just got that.
Okay. That's one of Jamie's drawings.
Yep, yeah, that's it.
It shows, it shows fire hydrants, it shows the connection to the building, the building connection, the Siamese connection. It shows...
Yeah, the building sprinkled, as noted on the architectials.
Yeah.
You know, I can show you. This is, this is a picture of the, kind of, the building, but this is the site plan, part of it being turned in. So, it's the part of the package. So, it shows the site with the access, ability to go around. One of the things that we, we're gonna have to discuss with you is, we're gonna have a sliding gate for in here, so obviously, you guys are gonna need access. We're pretty amenable to options, so what I'd like to do is maybe have the owners come down and just find out the preferred method to the department and the police.
There's a project upon, uh, hardy, where they just keyed the sliding gate door, knock box.
That's what I, what I've recommended, in Connecticut at least. I have several commercial sites, and actually, I live pretty close to the Walmart you built. We have knock box, knock box on all of our buildings, with all the keys, the gates, the locks, et cetera, et cetera. That's what I plan on offering.
Perfect.
Great.
Very nice.
And you might want to let them know about the timeframe. We submit these, there's a 10-day, you guys have a 10-day window, so it's not a lot of time.
No, no.
So, that's...
But that's only for comments. Your, your fire department's allowed all the time, once, whenever you want.
Yeah, but like you said, we'd like to be in that, that window, too, because we don't want to be chasing ourselves, and obviously, it may just cost you gentlemen, too, you know, in the project and so forth.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Very good.
We gotta go back to training. Thank you.
Mike Todd.
Nice to meet you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
See you.
See ya.
Let me send them back in?
No, no.
Brian, I wanted to say that you have to send them to the recording booth.
What's that?
Would you now send them to the recording booth?
Okay.
I have started yet.
Okay. So, for, for the remainder of the meeting, we are going to have a recording. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Janice is gonna record it for the secretary. So, number two on the agenda is to meet with Mr. Paul Turner. How are you, Paul?
Hi.
Everyone?
Yep. Lot nine, lot nine Astro. Starting to build. The owner would like to build eight thirty by six eight drive.
Okay.
These are locations, all of the driveways are existing.
Yes.
If they end up saying trouble with the show, you know, also...
Gentlemen, can you see this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Are there any questions?
Looks perfectly legal.
It looks funny.
Do you know who this is? Does someone live there?
Yeah, all these houses are built, yeah.
Yeah. They're not likely...
It looks like there's quite a bit of spread between the driveways.
Quite, yes. I'll entertain a motion to...
How is this sent here, but it's really common, it has a run guy, you guys? So, it'd be picked up on the...
Absolutely. But the motion would be to, to not, to not take any action, and just reflect it in the, in the, as well.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in.
The water holes in his plane. Yeah, there you go. Bye, guys.
Number three on the agenda is to meet with Outback Engineering regarding approval not...
Approval not required.
Required. Submit for eighteen Howland Road.
PJ Babino, for the record, from Outback.
You can see we're just reconfiguring the lot lines between these two lots. There's only a triangle here, to give this lot enough frontage, so we know it's a little...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this little, going from this lot to this lot.
Yeah.
It is a little odd shape, that's why we reified Mr. Darling, to make sure that it's affordable zoning. And I did send a email that made sense, by saying that he considered it affordable zoning. I'm located, look at that.
I have not.
He's, he's, he's gonna go to...
Yeah, he says it's, it's just, it's not a lot, it's just a lot of, too much of the houses.
What is the front of the...
Right now, it's, well, it's, it's not quite 175, that's why we're doing this.
Oh, with, with that?
With this little triangle, now it has...
With the triangle that has 175 on it?
Whereabouts is that located?
This is, this is that.
Freetown.
Yeah, right, right before Freetown, is that big house.
Um, that's Mill Street, at the corner of Mill Street and Howland?
Yeah, right before Mill Street.
That's on the, on the left side.
Yep. Before you get to Freetown. And this is an old house, and this house was built about 10 years ago.
Adams, any problems? Eight degrees. Motion approved, the plan is drawn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You up?
I'm signed at the end, I can pick it up tomorrow? Yes.
Perfect. You took the mail off?
Yeah.
Is that the one that was on the email?
Yes.
Thanks, Janice. Okay, next on the agenda is to meet with Mr. Jamie Bissonette from Xena Consulting Engineers, regarding a site plan review for War Millennium.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette, Xena Consulting Engineers.
Sir.
How you doing?
Good.
So, we're here for Millennium Circle.
Yes.
And essentially, what we're looking to do is change the area use. We're looking to do marijuana cultivation inside the building.
Uh-huh.
And the site plan itself kind of details what we're proposing as far as parking, site improvements, and we've also attached architectials with a basic floor plan. If you'd like, I can spend a minute and go...
Strictly cultivation?
No, I'm, I'm...
We're doing just for the cultivation.
And she wanted me to call and see if, for the zone...
So, this is an existing zone, is that a quick reference? This is the building now, the design, on Millennium, it's behind the RV dealership.
It's kind of a...
What we're looking to do is use the first entrance, first sliding gate, that's controlled with our parking area over here.
Would you prefer...
During our work, it's actually closing the doors inside, putting in key access ramps and openings to go into the new office. The new interior, the doors and everything being changed or modified. And we're showing adequate parking for the zone, right, as in this use of office.
Yeah.
On the backside of the building, or actually, I guess on the northeast side of the building, we're gonna be doing a fenced-in area for generators and...
The latest would be, go for the...
Screen as well.
Thank you.
Screen, yep.
And then over on the side here, we have a small trash compactor, and the back here, there's a loading door that's gonna remain. We're looking to fence in, uh, three points of entry.
Yeah.
Over in here, up in here, as we discussed, and in the back over here, there's entrances behind the P P heads. So, we're looking to...
Behind the what pitch?
What is it, P P head?
Yes, yes.
Kevin Bruce owns it. Bruce had contacted me, and acquired what our intentions were. I don't know that we were checking our terminal, to see if any easements to access the properties. Our lawyers couldn't find any easements in the records. We're gonna lock it. Bruce said that it won't be restricted, cars from going back and forth, he was in full support, and he said, "No, you could enter out of this meeting, or we just had it sit on."
Yes.
Each two of our set goes over some landscaping improvements that we have for the site. We're looking to do, in the firm right now, it's kind of, you know...
There's a picture.
Yeah, the grass is ready to clean up. There's not much for plantings. What we're looking, as you can see, what we're looking to do is, we're looking to do some plantings, some trees, some mulch beds, some screenage on the side, to kind of make everything look nice. And we're also providing some large boulders for an additional level of security. It will look nice, it'll be on grade.
Yep.
They'll, they'll be able to help as far as secure the perimeter, but it also will be a nice aesthetic feature.
As a social ballerism.
Exactly. And then, the third sheet of our set goes over hidden cap access to the two doors, they saw, details for construction, actually construction of the site. Warning detection strips, and the like, additional carving. I believe that we're actually gonna have reduction in pavement, due to the fact that we're actually cutting out the entrance to the existing garage doors, we're gonna be putting a brush down in those areas. I think the big thing is, wanna look at the building itself, the proposed from what's existing, I think that's the major improvement to the site. Right now, this is what we have, you know, it's a building, it's a building, and we're just... What's being proposed is something along these lines. We're gonna be giving the building a facelift with Xena, we're gonna be updating the windows in newer locations, looking at putting a 18 wall on the front, to help break up the front facade, and also lights that, that hopefully, stand on emphasis on the IV and so. I think all knows. Try to answer any questions, Mike.
Could you show what that would look like with the 36-foot-long gate?
You mean on the side of our building?
Yeah, the, you know what I mean, the landscaping...
Yeah, so, these are the profiles that we have in the sheet. The side with, with the gate, oh, you mean the sliding gate?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, no, we do not have the sliding gate on, on the front five of the sheet.
It's simply, it's a six-foot-high gate, paged link like a ballpark, and it's on a rolling slide.
Yeah, I, I get it. Where does it, which way does it go? It goes in front of the building?
In front of the building, and, and again, it's, it's gonna, my understanding is, it's gonna be closed all the time.
Closed all the time, until somebody keys in, and it opens, and it allows it to pass through. And if you look at, if you look at the drawing there, it's, the gate is blocked throughout the building, so it's, it's getting blocked by the bad landscaping. If you're concerned, we could, we possibly could slide the IV away from the building, but then we might lose some of the light that we're looking to shine down on, and also, I don't want the IV to end up being something where somebody could go behind the building, work on the building.
Yes.
And the IV is covered.
Yeah, right. Shenanigans. Yeah, mischief.
Yeah, we're showing, we're showing the gate on our plan fully contracted, but the game plan is to have it below...
Gotcha.
Okay.
I, I've seen the site, I believe, yesterday, because I was over there, I mean, I was down in Abra, and I walked around the building, and they always have to leave something from...
Yep.
They need bollards, or a couple of gas meters outside.
Yeah, yeah.
Because somebody hit them, and the gas meters all bent over. But that's the most money I think that, that would be one of the... The, I don't know about how, the signage is not ours to do, the signage is on the board.
Yes, yes, yes.
The ZVA, so you would deal with that separately, you might want more.
I think this falls, this falls underneath, we have, we do have...
Yeah.
So, I spoke with Nate very quickly about it, just to make sure that something stepped up to him, and I asked the, the owners of the site to do a, have their, to do a quick, I guess, quick area, so we can make sure that we're...
There you go.
So, it'll fall underneath the area, and...
Now, the, on the building?
I'm sorry?
Is this on the building?
It is, it's, it's right up here.
Yep.
Right up in this vicinity.
And you only have, those, those are only a foot and a half high, those letters?
One foot, eight inch, yeah, eight and a half inches. Yep. And so, 20 inch, again, this isn't, we're not looking to call people to the site, it's not for sale.
Right.
Nothing good happening there for them. And the, they've got a lot of, somebody's parking in the back, and a truck, parks in the front, so it's, so it's probably...
Janice, I explained earlier...
I understand.
We, we allowed the individual who sells the REs in the front of 44, as a neighbor in the west, you know, for paying any money, he said if he needed to relocate his REs for plowing, he could park them in the back park, probably for free, and he did, and I understand, springing, and we'll take them away, but when we do do this, and we allow them to park there long enough, we're moving them to us.
Yeah, I was here at the earlier meeting.
Okay.
So, that's why it's, I didn't want to annoy anybody saying things to it, but I'm, I'm pretending I wasn't there.
Okay.
They, they, they're gonna be using them. I would approve this with, you know, with a couple of conditions, just the, the gas meter, the, the gas meter bollards.
Is the, would the generators, I know they're, will the generators be near the parking areas, 'cause the generators should be protected by bollards just as much, you know, they, they're like, they're like magnets for plows, and for trucks.
What is this, this fenced-in area on the side?
They're gonna move the meters anyway.
That's right.
They're gonna move the meters anyway. So, forget my note.
Well, we, it would be a security, you know, if we left the gas meter open in front, that's, that's a security breach for us, you know what I mean? That has to be fenced in for us.
Then they're gonna move them anyway.
Excuse me, folks, could you keep it down just a little bit while we have our meeting?
Pretty good. Keep busy.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, they're next.
What else you got, Zigaming?
No. No, I, I support it.
So, if you adjust the meters, and, you know, put protection around the generators, we're fine.
Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure that the meters are adjusted, they're most likely getting moved.
Yeah.
We'll make sure they're inspected.
Okay, yes, well, okay, I'll, it's in motion.
I think it's already...
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Can I pick up a set of sign cards tomorrow, Jim?
Uh...
We have the signature block on the top three sheets. I can make copies if you guys just want to sign them.
Happy Street?
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, thanks. Just any one of the papers, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Okay. You have the stuff.
So, well, I'll start, you know, I think tomorrow morning, we'll have the host agreement sent over and signed for you guys, and I thought that that would, we're doing it already.
No, I...
So, it's all set?
Like, for instance, I, we have the host agreement, and we're doing it for the other people, but that's...
Now, you have...
Yeah, my lawyer said it was a misunderstanding, but he'll be there, so you got a lot of hosting tomorrow, and we'll get punched in a lot.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Now, there are some people here that are presenting a drainage issue on Fuller Shores. I just don't know if they, there's no name on it.
Call the Fuller Shores Association.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Yeah. Jamie? Is this, is this a mic? Is this a microphone, or?
Yes.
This is.
Is somebody else with you?
No.
Just leave it, leave it right on the chair, that's good, unless somebody needs it.
Unless you wanna be frank enough.
It's on either direction, so, stays.
You hear that, too?
No, I think he was asking him to say...
No, I was just asking him, 'cause I, 'cause I think he worked on it.
I'm sure he did.
Back, I mean, not this, the other.
Okay, folks, folks from Fuller Shores, Fuller Shores. Thank you, anyone, yes?
Yeah, I'm president and treasurer of the organization, and there are a couple of other officers here also, as well as residents of Fuller Shores area.
Okay. If you speak, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Ted Lang, 42 Fuller Shores Road in Lakeville.
Okay.
And I, I'd just like to review briefly how this thing's gone so far. We, I brought up to your group, to the office about six weeks ago...
Yes.
A letter that I'm hoping and assuming most of you read, outlining the difficulties we've had at Fuller Shores for the past five years, especially since Justin's Way was developed, and the problems actually did begin in 2014, when a lot of the land was cleared, trees were cleared and so forth, for the space that would become eventually Justin's Road, and Justin's Way, and some of the houses that would be built down that way. The, prior to that occurring, a lot of the water from rain and other things would, that was, essentially, that was, land that was north of Fuller Shores Road, Fuller Shores Roads running east and west, it was north of it, would, would be taken care of by just natural resources, the trees and so forth, as well as some culverts and so forth, that had been developed by the people who developed the homes along Fuller Shores Road, as well as the other ones. And that, that changed dramatically, and I mean, I don't say dramatically, but noticeably the first year after everything was cleared, and evidently, it is believed that when they began digging for Justin's Way, they hit some kind of a ground, or some kind of a spring, that released a lot more water with a lot more pressure than had been there before, and we started to see water coming up through the ground, onto what was then land, but then eventually became a road, and eventually coming over to Fuller Shores Road, and from Fuller Shores Road going west toward the water, a little bit came back toward Bedford Street, but just a small amount. And over the past four or five years, the problem has become increasingly difficult, because what's happened is, during the summer months, the... because what's happened is during the summer months, the water will so-called flood or pool on the street, which is a little bit annoying, but nonetheless usually tolerable. But during the winter months, due to both the amount of water that comes up, plus sometimes the snow, and then the drop in temperature during the winter months, especially this past winter when we get some very severe drops and change in weather, we would get freezing. And what would happen is that the freezing would cause some very severe ruts, ice, icing and ruts, some of which were as deep as six inches this past year. I don't think they got more than four inches, but which was severe enough, because it covered the entirety of Fuller Shores Road for a period of probably hundred to two hundred feet. And those hundred to two hundred feet is very, very dangerous. It's nearly impassable, it's nearly impassable for driving. It's very difficult, it's not dangerous for walking, and we have some real concerns, both for the children who have to get to a bus stop down by the corner of Bedford Street in Fuller Shores Road, and the, and the people, not as much the people, but any kind of emergency vehicles that might be necessary, whether they're fire, police, but especially emergency medical vehicles. The, the result is that it's, the situation is getting worse, not better, and we have spent just in the past two years alone, over seventy-eight hundred dollars, just trying to repair the road as a result of the weather and the water, the cracking of ice, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's also been very notable, because this past year, where there was very, very little snow, we still ended up spending a lot of money on road treatment, sand and.
Salt.
Sand and salt.
Yep.
And the amount of money that we spent on that was probably twice as much as we spent any other winter, even during, even during when we had snow. Because the, even for the snow, before all this happened, the snow is, can be plowed. But, but once that, once that water hits Bedford, excuse me, once it hits Fuller Shores Road, it just begins to freeze, and then even if it pours a little bit during the daytime, if there's a distinct drop in temperature overnight, we get the freezing all over again, and the problem remains. At this point, I just want to mention briefly that some of our, some of our residents have spoken to various people at various committees in the, in the town, and tried to seek whatever remedies that might be available, but there were, nothing came of those. And at the same time, we, we know that there are some things that should, can and should be done by the town. It's, I mean, come very clear it was, that the problem that's occurred, has occurred almost entirely since the development of Justin's Way. And now, when Justin's Way was being developed, whether, you know, whether it was faulty judgment or lack of knowledge regarding the drainage, or lack of knowledge regarding the various flows of water, and, and water pressure flow, et cetera, we, we do not know that. We really, we really do not know that, but, but we feel, as a, as a group of fifty-two residences, that the people who developed Justin's Way, Spalucci and his group, his professional people, his, his contractors, should have known or should have investigated and assessed the situation for what it was, and then taken care of it. But we were told at one point in time that, for whatever the reason, the, this board did not take out a bond on that work, and we cannot understand why or why that, why a bond wasn't taken out. And we feel that the damage that's been done and the damage that's going to have to be repaired should not be the responsibility of the fifty-two residences in Fuller Shores Association. We feel that it still rests with the, with the town, based upon the very, matter like the very regulations and so forth, that, you know, that are part of your town responsibilities.
Okay. Do you folks like me to respond to him right now, or does, do other people want to speak up?
Well, why don't you speak first?
Okay. Okay, Fuller Shores is a private road. Justin's Way is a private road. The town of Lakeville, albeit we take the plans for the project and we comment on it, we really don't have any recourse for, no, I mean, we don't have any recourse because it's a private road off of a private road. We have been in the position to comment and refuse people who have built a private road off of a private road down Nelson Shore, when they put in, I don't know, Strayer, yeah, when Danny Strayer put in his little subdivision down there, I, I don't remember, I don't recall, pardon me?
Bartoli?
Thank you.
Ted.
Bartelli.
Something like gloves.
Ted.
And we told the courts that we did not want to see that built, because it wasn't of sufficient width grade and drainage to put in that road. And we spent considerable money to fight that, and we went to court on it, and at the time, the chairman of the board, Allerton, and the vice chair, Jim Merritt, went into court, and they fought against putting that road in. And the judge told them that they didn't have a leg to stand on, that he was going to rule that they could put in that road. And now the town spent an awful lot of money fighting against that. And if the town was to fight against every private road off of a private road and get denied their appeal, which is legitimately because the precedence was set by the judge telling us that we didn't have a leg to stand on. So when, when we were up against this project, which I remember very well, and we weren't very much in favor of it, because it was a private road off of a private road, there wasn't an awful lot we could do. Town council, you know, the powers that be, we really don't have a leg to stand on. We, I mean, we have a review on it, we can make suggestions, but that's about where it stands, because it's a private road off of a private road.
So any private road off of a private road, you don't hold a bond on?
No.
No?
We can't. We can hold, we can hold a, a bond on a, a road that is going to be public, and is going to be, is going to be used by the general public.
Yes.
Off of a public road, like off of Bedford Street, we can. A new subdivision off Bedford Street, but if, if you're talking about a private road off of, even Fuller Shores itself, we have no control of it. We don't go in there and plow it, correct? We don't go in there and repair it when it falls apart and when you have potholes, because the town isn't responsible for it, because it's a private road.
Well, if we were aware of that, we probably would have been more vocal in our opposition to it, because we, we made a crystal clear that there was some water issues down there. And now they made us aware as an association that we couldn't hold the bond.
I'm sure, and we, we, we were very vocal about our opposition to Bartelli. Thank you. Really, we were against it a hundred percent, and they just stuffed it in our pants. Yes, ma'am?
Just spent a long time.
My name's Kerry Polyalogos, we just bought a house in Fuller Shores, on eighteen Fuller Shores. So basically what you're saying is there's nothing that you can do about it, whoever built, and hit that water underneath? Who did, who hit that water system that continually flows?
That would have been the contractor of the road.
And who was that? Do we know who that person was?
Bob Palucci.
Is he aware?
Is he aware of it?
I would say yes.
So why doesn't?
He does. It's a civil matter.
Civil matter?
It's not, it's not between the town and Mr. Palucci, it's between you folks and, you folks as an association against the people that he sold this property to, or him, or them and him in conjunction, yes. You possibly do have.
Does he have the same?
Uh, excuse me.
Was the road permitted?
Name?
Uh, Tim James, forty-four Fuller Shores.
Okay. Was the road permitted?
Yeah, did they permit that they could start the road?
No, we don't give permits on private roads off of private roads. No, but he owned the property? Well, we don't give permits off of a private road.
Notices to the butters?
Pardon me?
Are there notices to all the surrounding homes?
You could possibly give me your name too.
Me?
Yeah, so you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just said it, Kerry Polyalogos, eighteen Fuller Shores.
Okay, and what are you?
Were notices sent out, because we're new down there, to all the butters, like that whoever, that Mr. Palucci was going to do that development?
Were you there when he built the road?
No, I wasn't.
So.
I was just wondering.
There would have been, notices don't typically have to be sent out, but.
We didn't, we didn't.
I was just curious, because we get notices on Main Street when people are, anything's coming.
Pardon me?
I was just wondering, if there's a business coming, or this is being built, or that's being built, or a development, we get notices around our property, our Main Street.
If there's, it's a hearing, yes.
So because it's a private area?
No, they have, but it's me, they have one.
Yeah. Okay, Rocky?
And we were very vocal about the water issues.
Rocky Savitzky?
Yes.
Wonder if I, how to hear is a.
That's okay, Rocky.
You were, before you said that the association was against the road going in there. How did the road get in there?
The town doesn't have, the town doesn't grant them permission to build the road. It's a private road off of a private road. They have, they have the ability to build the road, and they have the ability to subdivide it per town standards. The town can neither approve nor deny the road, because it's a private road off of a private road.
Okay. Then how, to go a little step further?
Are you gonna read?
How, who issued the permits for that road for the housing?
There are no, the permits.
Yeah.
Were issued through the building department, because they had the correct frontage and the correct land area for the road.
Right.
So.
So you people that had nothing to do with that association?
No.
No responsibility?
No. And that's the Nelson Shore the same way, Fuller Shore the same way, Staples Shore the same way, it's the way it is. It's, let's say another one on.
So who has oversight? So you guys greenlight the project, and then we're left to pick up the pieces?
Do you have a name?
Mike Irvine, fifty Fuller Shores Road.
Yeah, yeah. What? There was a.
It was a Form C development.
Which is.
With a private road.
Yeah, it was a Form C development with a private road.
So we have, you know, so we have oversight.
So I'm just saying, you greenlight it and then walk away?
We don't greenlight it, we can neither approve it nor deny it. That's the law.
Okay, so you clearly approved it, and that's.
No, we can neither approve it nor deny it, it's the law. It's a private road off of a private road.
So what do you guys do then?
If he wants to build, if he wants to build twenty-five hundred square foot lots, right? He can do it, okay, on a private road. But then when he goes to the building department, and he says, I have twenty-five hundred square foot lots, the building department will say, I'm not granting you a building permit, because they have to be a hundred and seventy-five thou, a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. With a hundred, what?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand square feet, with a hundred and seventy-five footer frontage, okay? So he built them the correct size and the correct frontage to be able to put the houses in. And we really, I mean, we fought against it, I'm telling you, way back in, what was it? When we did Strayer's, was it in the eighties?
Oh, for Fuller Shores, or for Justin?
No, for Bartelli.
Oh, Bartelli, all for Justin's, I was on.
Yeah, Bartelli's, I think it was like in the, it was in the early, no, ninety-five.
Bartelli, I remember that road.
Ninety-six.
Does anyone approach Palucci? No, not in my knowledge.
Doesn't he live, doesn't he live here?
Not anymore.
Isn't he elected official on this town?
Yeah, he is.
Can I? No, it's not, it's nothing like that.
Well, perception, Robert Brink on twenty-eight Fuller Shores. Perception is, is a real problem with government, you know, and with all due respect, you know, you people are probably, I don't know if you're paid or get a stipend, but I know you're commissioners or you're on this commission, and I've had experience in the town of Situate, and sometimes you go from one committee to another committee to another committee, and not my problem, not my problem, and there's nothing I can do, and there's nothing I can do. The town's very quick and they're cashing all the tax checks, though, and they give us nothing.
Right.
And Ted, I believe, wants to read something in the regulations that stipulate, in effect, your charges. And we little people, you know, we're frustrated, I hope you can appreciate that.
Yes.
And the poor guy who wants to do some little thing that has no consequence probably to anybody, has to go through hell sometimes in these towns to get some little thing done that, that ain't going to bother anybody. And then a developer or a contractor comes in and practically can get away with anything with no consequences. And all this legal ease is thrown back at us, and you may be specifically correct in what you say, I can't challenge that, okay? But, you know, it seems to me government is here to protect people, okay? We got contractors and developers, and it's no secret that Lakeville is, you know, either inviting or, inviting or promoting development. And I don't know where you draw the line, okay? I'm not a seer, and, and, and we're, the population is too much or too little for the schools or the fire, and, you know, all those issues, okay? But I got a seasonal cottage there, no heat, okay? Drain the water, okay? Two months' use. I pay more taxes here than I pay in Boston for a big house. And it's very frustrating. And, and we see all of these town commissions as, you have to wonder, you know, we wonder, we go home and wonder what really goes on, because you, you, you might rubber stamp something or go so far, but where is government protecting the people that need some protection, who can't pay anymore? Okay, we got enough problems, okay? That, you know, and, and, you know, do we have to take Palucci and anyone else that was involved tacitly or untacitly, and lump them all together, and, and, and is that it? It's a civil action, is that your only response? The town loves cashing the checks. It's grossly unfair that, that we can get shunted from one committee to another, who has a poor view and a, and a, and a charged responsibility, and I hope Ted's going to bring this up. Ted, would you like to?
No, no, he's the chair. He'll decide.
Well, I'm asking Ted, would he like to? May I?
I'd like to speak.
Yes.
I don't do politics, we also don't get stipends or anything. We also don't get stipends or anything like that. I mean, we're, we're, we're just playing here as volunteers, this is my tenth year. There's, there's, and I'm not gonna talk about, uh, I, I know exactly where, where our rights stop, and your rights stop, and stuff like that, but I'm not gonna talk about that, because it's, that's not a discussion to have at this sort of meeting. What we're talking about is water and ice. That's all I'm gonna talk about, is water and ice. I'm only gonna talk about...
Excuse me, man?
Water and ice.
Mr. Savvas can't hear.
Speak up.
Okay, sorry.
Five minutes, I haven't heard what you said.
Okay. I'm only, I'm not gonna talk about politics, or, you know, who's right or stuff like that. I'm only gonna talk about water and ice. This particular road, it, it isn't that terribly steep. There's, there's only like sixteen, I just made, checked it, sixteen feet of drop in this whole length. It was done by, the drainage was done by a professional engineer. I'm certain from, and I've looked at this thing in the past month, I've checked, I've checked it each week, and I, I've looked to see what was there. It appears to me that you've had some problems before on that street, and it seems to me that there's a, there's a, there's, there's a ditch running all the way down the street that runs underneath everybody's driveway and then goes further. When I was there last time, I couldn't, it wasn't that I could see the water going there, I could hear the water twenty feet away running over here. The other thing is, this is the highest point on this, on the street, right here, and it's icing up at the highest point. Now, what's going on with that? Why, you know, it doesn't ice up, ice is supposed to form in the valley, not on top of the hill. And I look over here at this, there's some rocks here, or, or some rocks that were left there, and there's a ditch dug, dug through it. Somebody is taking the water that's supposed to be falling out like that, and they're running it into somebody else's yard over here. And this water, on the, on the ups...
Uphill side?
On, on the uphill side, I can't, I can't understand even where it's coming from. This...
Well, it's coming out of the ground.
What they installed here...
We don't have underground springs on top of the hill.
How do you know?
Well, because you don't. I'm just gonna say.
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Brian Clary, 43 Fuller Shores Road. Lived there quite a long time.
Yes.
That hill has so much water in it, it's hard to believe.
That's what it looks like.
Oh, it's unbelievable. We have a little farmer's porch house that's right across from Justine's Way. When Strayer's people dug, there was Debbie Blaze, and I forget the fellow's name, that did a handy something. When they dug that foundation hole, that filled up with four feet of water the day they dug it. They pumped it for three weeks to get the footings in, and then they had to pump for another two weeks to get the foundation formed. So the, the top of that hill is unbelievably wet. The east side of the hill that faces Bedford Street, you'll never find any ice or snow, because it melts so fast, because there's so much heat under the hill from the water flow.
Well, there's a lot of water on the east side.
Yeah, so, but I'm saying there's an enormous amount of water on the hill.
Yeah.
And when we disturbed, when that, when that property got disturbed, it diverted that water, and now it's going westbound on Fuller.
And it's going way down.
I mean, I pushed somebody out of the ice. Rocky and I pushed somebody out of ice road that was ten inches deep this year. So it's not, it's not made up. The question is, is if the, if the town's not gonna assume any responsibility, then the only recourse we have is to go after the developer. But it's pretty, it's pretty crappy that that's really the issue.
So if I'm, I'm sorry, Rocky, go ahead.
Once again, what the road that you're talking about, on top of that hill, we never had a problem, until this happened, never. There is a pipe, two or three houses past that, going down the hill. I used to walk that road for the past forty, fifty years, so I know that road very well. But there was nothing but a path there. There is a pipe there which flows underneath, and it goes into, at the end of the road, where there's a little swamp there. Now, I'd like to read something else here, if I could. On 12419, Mr. Clary, a Fuller Shore resident stopped by to speak to Mr. Darlin again, and was told by Mr. Darlin that he couldn't do anything because of the building, building lots had been sold, and Mr. Palucci has no longer, was no longer with the development. Additionally, he explained that the Lakeville Planning Board, which normally will require a bond, be held on, be held on any new developments for just this type of problem, had not held a bond for this project. So what you said earlier is not true. You do require bonds, but a bond was not required.
Excuse me, Rocky. We require bonds on roads that are built per town's requirements off of a town road. This is not a town road.
Now, go one step further.
You go, please, no, before you even say anything else, you go back to the building inspector and say, "What is the town's requirement for having a bond posted for a road off of a private road?" And then you can come back to me.
I'll drop that, I'll drop that part of my argument.
Yeah, well, good.
What responsibilities does this board have for that development?
It's a town, it's a private road off of a private road.
Yes, but there's no responsibilities at your...
No, we can't deny 'em. We can't say, "Okay." We can't do anything. It's, it's...
The, the town doesn't have any responsibilities?
No!
If you, if you own a piece of property in a residential neighborhood, you are allowed to subdivide it and build a residence.
I would rather us be able to say, "No, you can't build on that property."
The tax money that goes into the coffers of the town or local from this organization, and we have no, nothing to go fall on.
But I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what. You can check with the state, because the state mandates the zoning laws. The state will tell you that a private road off of a private road is not under the purview of the planning board.
Then how was that private road getting...
Why didn't we have a come before you people?
When?
Where was the point of the Butters meeting?
When?
2013, 2014?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's a good thing that you at least got a chance to voice your opinion before they...
Why?
No, it's, it has nothing to do with me.
If you were vocal in opposition of it. If you informed us at that meeting that you don't hold a bond, and we're left holding the bag if anything goes awry, which clearly it has...
We probably said that.
We would be more vocal...
No, you didn't say it. Okay, so...
So can you retrieve the minutes from that meeting?
I'll try.
Okay, well, retrieve the minutes, and then, just like you told Rocky...
I'll try.
Then come back and we'll talk. You should be able to retrieve us. And I wanna hear the opposition, because I was at that meeting, and I didn't hear any opposition from you folks.
Okay.
And the concerns were expressed.
Absolutely.
Name?
My name's Chris Catalaro, Rashad Lane. The concerns were expressed in that meeting, because there was quite a few, there were quite a few members of the association there, and I believe at that meeting it was also stated there would be a bond held, and Mr. Palucci was sitting right in front of me.
I'm sure...
But I do have one other question, though, before we go in.
I was at that meeting, and we don't hold bonds on private roads.
Then my memory must be failing.
No, we don't hold bonds on private roads.
So with that said, if, if this is all about a private road coming out of a private road is the issue, what does it take to make Fuller Shore's a public road?
I, I don't believe you can.
Don't know. The only...
Pardon?
I, I don't think the layout for Fuller Shores Road meets the town's standards. It's a private road. Too narrow. And, and I think when we, when we discussed doing this with Palucci, he was gonna go, he was gonna go with a 40B project, and he was gonna put twenty-five units in there.
So thank you for pushing back on that.
No, I know, I know. Well, that's what we did. We pushed back on that, because then you don't have, you know, twenty-five to forty-five people driving up and down that road every day, you know, and, and just get the same stuff going on, okay? So that's what we did. And believe me, I was one of the ones vocal on that. Sir, your name?
Roger Freeman, 23 Fuller Shore Road.
Yeah.
I know, uh, earlier before this plan, uh, there was another plan for like seven lots, and they showed all sorts of drainage going on to a detention pond, uh, with catch basins. I have the plan on me.
All right.
Uh, but, uh, I just don't know why that was scrubbed, why the drainage was scrubbed, when there were catch basins and drain manholes to go down to a, a detention pond before.
And which lot? Which lot was it?
That was when they, they were trying to get seven, seven lots out of it earlier?
Ledwin.
They do have a detention pond on, on one of the lots now.
You're talking about Justine's Way, right?
Yes, yes, Justin's Way.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the seven lot subdivision we just spoke of earlier in the meeting. Is that right now?
No, no.
Oh.
No. Now, this is Justin's Way's, one of the earlier plans...
Okay.
That was presented. They had drainage down to a detention pond. They do have a detention pond now, which they were supposed to do a swale to from Justin's Way's Road, which is on that plan, that they haven't done. So a lot of the water that's supposed to be going down to that detention pond is not going down there. And then, uh, all of Justin's Way, you can see by all the contours, that everything is basically funneling right down Justin's Way. And then they did that swale to bring all the water down to Fuller Shores. Now, I don't see how they can even get, even do that, because you would never do that on a public road with a new subdivision, bringing drainage all down onto a public road.
Where's the swell? Can I come up and point to you?
Absolutely.
It doesn't really show it too well, but this would take all this...
Now, that swale is preventing water from coming down there. That's what it's intended for.
And it should be collecting all this water from all of here. And I think the design should've brought it so that it could connect here, so that we would only get this much water, where all this, all this is sloping down. You know, some, some drainage should've been brought in here. Right now, it's all coming down through here.
All this water should be going into many receivers here.
Because all this water that's coming down, down through here is getting squeezed through here, because now this is a high-packed road, that water cannot get through, like it used to, because it, it used to pond in this area before the road came in, and Danny Strayer, when he built Fuller Shore, he created a ditch that went under some of the driveways down through here to a, a catch basin.
Yes.
Okay? Uh, when they started building this, they filled in that hole, blocked, blocked that, that little ponding, so the water couldn't get down here. And it's resulted in the overflow of water all through this area and here. So then he, when he cut the road in, he did a lot of the, uh, the large stones, the...
Reprout?
Not re, well, not reprout, it's the, all the waste stones from the shakers. He, he dug a, a pretty deep hole right at the entrance, right up against our road, with all that stone, and dumped it all in there, which meant a very good reaching area for all the water to get into, and, and just get trapped in there. And what it's doing is that it's forcing its way right up through the blocktop, and causing it all to break down, and then all run down to our catch basin at about six hundred feet down. And during the winter, I mean, when you have all the freezing, it almost makes a, like a volcano type of effect, when you get the, the warm water coming out of the ground.
Spring.
You know, it's, it freezes, gets higher, gets higher, higher. We have six-inch puddle of ice, you know, all in the whole area through here, from all the water coming out of here. Because I think he broke open, I think he uncapped the spring, what he did. Because it, I mean, we, we still have water coming down there now, and we haven't had any rain for a little while. But, and, and these are all full of water right now. But I'm just wondering what, you know, he should've done a little bit more on his drainage. I think he should've done a detention pond here with some more drainage.
Should there be a culvert underneath here?
Yeah, well, we have, uh, we've got an estimate from Red Lawn of, uh, just over thirty thousand dollars to put like a French drain, catch basin, to try to solve the water problem, so it wouldn't, so we can get a catch basin in, in here, and in here with, uh, like a, a French drain up in here to collect the, the water that's just popping out of the ground right in here, because this, it's all coming down through here, the road won't let it get over here, uh, into the ponding that it used to. So we were gonna do a, a, a French drain to run down through here, and possibly convert it over to the ditch we have, that all this water used to go down previously.
This is running right now, I mean, that water's coming right now.
Yeah, very, very little, but it's, uh, it is running.
I would call it a lot.
Yeah, it is running. But there's just so much pressure and water that's coming out of here, that's just not enough. It's, it's up too high. It was good at the time, but now the road is, has disturbed, and I think has uncapped the, a spring, and it's hiding the problem. We just gotta know who, who to...
I have two questions.
We have to...
Do, do you know who cut the trench here? There's a recent trench.
Well, this was always there. That was always there when it, when we had the puddling here, because it's got the pipeline of the driveway right here.
Yeah.
That was, that was always there, going to the, uh, the ponding that was here, collecting all this water, and, and it going down. And when, when we had the original Fuller, before the new Fuller Shore, back before Strayer got in here, it used to curve this way a little bit, and go over here, there was a little bank, it was up higher. And so when he brought this through, everything got lower, and that's why everything's coming out. Before, it used to puddle and go through the pipeline down the driveway into the catch basin.
Have, have these folks joined your...
Association.
Association?
Uh, they're, under their own association. Ted might be able to tell you a little bit more on how Justin's Way is tied in with us, retaining us, some of the snowpiling and stuff like that that we have to do with and stuff like that. You know, I, I don't think we should go after, you know, these new people, all this problem. I think we should be going after Palucci, that built us, really. But I guess it might be just a soul case, what, what's happening, but I, you know, I didn't know if maybe you had any polls on doing anything, you know, to help, to help him down. That's, that's, um, that's my say.
Thanks, Roger. Thanks, bud.
Sure.
Do we have the right to ask the town selectmen or to put something in the budget to, you know, help alleviate a, you know, a problem that is just worthy of helping the citizens? If, is this something that, aside from civil action, that we could, uh, go to the town and, and, and see if someone would sponsor a bill that would, uh, help, help some repairs or alterations?
You're asking me if you have the right to ask the selectmen something? You have the right to ask the selectmen anything you want.
But I mean, would you, would you, would you folks support us in, 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 in the need?
If the selectmen came to me and... If the selectmen came to me and asked me what my, what my thoughts were on what the town standing was on a private road that was built off of a private road, I would have to say that we went to court with Danny Strayer on another project of a private road, of a private road.
But this is-
And we, pardon me?
The question is not to the legal requirement that you addressed before. I'm, I'm, I'm simply asking, would you support the facts and the need that, and, and that, that, that this warrants-
Yeah, yeah, I'd support the fact that you have, you have a need. Yes, I would support the fact that you have a need to get that fixed. Will the town be willing to take the funds of the town and direct it towards fixing that?
Well, we have votes and, and we're taxpayers, so we have the right to ask, right?
Sure.
Ted, did you wanna-
They, they're meant to join your, they shall be obligated to become members of the-
Of your association?
Shall volunteer to become members of the Fuller Shore Association.
Yes.
This is, this is part of their, 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 it should be part of their deed.
Yeah, we're proprietorship now.
And that's, they, they shouldn't be separated. Because I, I think it's not a $30,000 fix.
You talk to Kathy when she comes to work?
I think a call, you know, maybe there should have been a call. Underneath Justine's Way.
Monday, Tuesday.
Just to carry the water from one lot to the other lot is what it appears to me, just looking at it. Now, the gross amount of water that's there, boy, is that a wet area. But there's, there's nothing you can, there's nothing an engineer can do to make it less wet. He can just get the water moving.
I would think if you look at it from an engineering point of view, you, there ought to be able, there ought to be some ways that you can divert the water in various directions to at least alleviate the situation considerably.
At least not make it worse.
And also that it doesn't cause the problems it's causing now.
Yeah, it, it, things shouldn't get worse.
Mr. Hoag, could I just read something here for the record at least?
Certainly.
The, it's coming directly from the rules and regulations for the planning board governing the subdivision of land in, in section one, subsection C. There are certain parts of it that, that we feel apply particularly to, to the, to this situation. The, the, starts off the subdivision rules and regulations are enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of Laclel, put in effect by regulating the laying out and construction of ways and subdivisions, providing access to the several lots therein, but which have not become public ways. Another section says-
Say it again, please.
It was, I'm sorry, it was section one, subsection C. And there's one part there that says that starts with these subdivision rules and regulations, et cetera. Did you find it, sir?
I'm sorry, I mean, I assumed you were reading actually.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's self from subsection C. And I'm not gonna read all of subsection C because it's pretty lengthy, but I just, there are some particularly important and relevant points of that first part that I just read. And the last part, ways and subdivision providing access to those several lots therein, but which have not become public ways. A second part of it in the next paragraph is, for reducing danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles for securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, and other emergencies. And then, further down, just another sentence or so, says for securing adequate provision for water, sewage, drainage, underground utility services, fire, police, and other similar municipal equipment. And what, you know, the, with all due respect to you, what the answers we're getting tonight are incompatible with what seems to be laid out in, in the, in the, you know, in the, in the rules and regulations that are supposed to be governing this group. And I, that's part of, I think, the frustration and upset with a lot of the residents here. The, the fact that they felt that they didn't have a loud enough voice in, in trying to stop whatever occurred. And the whole, I, I do remember that when they were having the issue of Justine's Way, the fact that there was even a, one private road that wasn't supposed to be allowed to hitch into a private road without the, without the consent and everything of the, of the people who lived on it, on the larger and already more established private road. But, I mean, it's, it's happened and it's, it's, in our, in our, from our perspective, it's, it's really an injustice. And now, this situation is just complicating and compounding the, the problem even more.
There's, you won't get a chance anywhere to consent, you know, in any, in any situation. I mean, that's, if, if there's an empty piece of land that's zoned residential, they're allowed to fill it with residences. And that we have to make sure that they can access, you know, our charge is to make sure that they can access that property safely. And this-
During the snow, you can't, you can't access it safely.
Well, actually, the road you just got built works perfectly well.
No, no, in front of the road.
But the old ones, yeah.
In front of, in front of Justine's Way, yeah.
Can I just add, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
This is an anecdote to what we're discussing, a real life event. About three years ago, I think it was, in the winter, my wife had the misfortune of slipping on the ice and breaking her wrist. We had, not on that ice, the ice that was collecting around our house. It was at night, and we called the Laclel Fire Department. They came and picked her up, came through the ice. And the guy was, the paramedic who came in to pick her together, was aghast at the condition of the road. And then, when she went back out, well, suffice to say, she'd probably make a couple of drill instructors look a little bit embarrassed with the way she was first in the road. So, I mean, it, it, that was, that was a pretty bad year. It would really concern me that we might lose emergency services because they can't get down there. So, there's so many issues that are tied to this, that's why you've got this many people out of 52 residents sitting here again, hoping for some help. Thanks.
The mail, the mail department has stopped service on several occasions.
Down your road?
Yeah, they won't come down.
That's surprising they even go down there. Most private roads, they have mailboxes down the head of the road.
Well, and, and we used to, some years ago, I, I don't know why that changed, but-
I don't either.
But nonetheless-
The US Postal Service.
I, I understand, but I mean, there's, there's many issues and-
You know, if you do see the selectmen, that's an excellent point, this, the, the fire and safety, that has to be brought forward first off, in front of the selectmen.
We're not getting younger down there.
And right there around that, this is at the top of the hill.
Yep.
And this is the worst-looking part of the street as you drive down Fuller Shore. I mean, from, all the way from one end to the other, this is the worst-looking part of the street. Now, and I look at it every couple of days. There's the guy that plows it right there at that corner. I mean, they aren't trying to like make it look bad for me to see. Because, because it, it-
Are you being funny?
No, it looks bad. No, I was trying, I was trying to be, yeah.
The ice is popping the surface.
It looked like, no, but there's a big pile, there's a big pile of ice on top of a hill on a road. That looks funny.
Did you get the opportunity to look at the videos that I sent to you?
Yes.
I watched it.
And it was real.
It's atrocious.
That wasn't worth the work.
Right, it's atrocious. I wish we had more control over it.
No, I understand.
As a board, I wish we had more control over it. I wish, because it's all going-
What can you do now?
In this hat.
Do we, we have no choice but to take it to the media?
Take it to the media.
I, I feel bad about it, but this really-
Think we can get a rebate from the town or our taxes?
Go for it.
Well, let me ask you a question, do you agree that we have an issue?
Yes, you have an issue.
Then I would suggest that one of you gentlemen contact Bob Pelucci. If he's a reputable businessman and he holds an elected position in this town, I wouldn't think he'd want the black mark on his reputation. So, I would suggest one of you gentlemen meet with Ted and Roger and Bob Pelucci and see if you can work something out before you do have to sue somebody.
That makes sense.
You'll have to believe the direction it's going.
Yeah, I, I'll-
He won't talk to me.
What?
He won't talk to me.
I can call Bob.
Yeah, I mean, we all, let's try to handle it, this gentleman here. And if that don't work, then we'll take whatever road we have to travel. I think that's a good suggestion.
I can give Bob a call.
Thank you.
I mean, it's a legitimate concern and a safety issue.
I'm Joe Alvenado, I live at 62 Fuller Shores, right at that corner where the water runs. And I built that house in 1999. Never ever, for 10, 12 years, I never had a drop of water in my basement. I have a French drain in my basement. Never, even in, in the event that I, if I did need, have a water problem. Ever since that road was put in, now I have water table at six inches below my slab in there. With my French drain.
Yep.
That's how much water is running through there right now. You can see that place you're talking about, that was always dry up on that. I always had nice grass and now all I have is mold and-
Moss.
Moss, because it's just moss because grass can't, it's too wet. It just won't grow there. And it's never, mine from day one, that whole corner on both sides of that property at the street, at Fuller Shore Road, was never finally dressed off. The piles of gravel that were still just dropped there with a bobcat, never spread out. I actually went out there myself with my boots. I'm out there trying to kick it down and get it as level as I could. They never put any lumen there, lumen seed, they never loomed it, they never seeded it. They, there is a pipe that goes-
For Justine's Way?
Justine's Way, and that, both, both sides of that roadway were never, ever addressed. The day they put the stone down, they just left it there and they left clumps of piles of dirt on both sides of the road. So, it's still there, it's never been, you can see, it's never been dressed. So, if someone approved it, I mean, someone, when, when he built that, is there any rules and regulations? Was it as-built?
No one-
Is it as-built that's been done?
No one approved it because it's not a town way.
Did he have to do an as-built?
No, it's not a town way.
I don't see the point of even going before you.
It's a, it's a very good-
Right.
Well, there's no point in even-
It's a very good-
Why are we saying this?
Go, go, go look at Bartelli, go look at Bartelli. There was a frickin' telephone pole in the middle of the road for how long?
That's true.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and we tried to get them to get that out of there and it was like, and we couldn't get them to do anything. Because, because it's a private way off a private way. You know?
And that pipe is not, is not right. You can just see the way the water runs. I do that for a living, I'm like, I can't even let somebody do this, you know, it's crazy.
Right, it's just a private way off a private way.
Well, who signed off on the drainage? Doesn't somebody have to sign off on it?
No.
There's no as-built, what you just said, you know?
No.
That, that road could be two feet-
It's a private way off a private way.
I mean, I just, this is new to me, I'm just baffled by it.
Yeah, join the crowd, 25 years I've been doing this and I just, it drives me crazy. Ma'am?
Kathy Stoffel, 23 Fuller Shores.
Yes.
So, private road, we can pretty much do anything we want to do down there then?
That's what they do all the time.
Yeah, as long as you're not growing like marijuana or something like that. Well, that's where you're going.
Nobody has any oversight over anything down there.
As far as the plane board goes, no.
Unless you want a town road, if it's a town road, we will supervise you every step of the way.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
We will get the minutes on that road?
I'm gonna try, I've already asked for it.
Okay.
So, what's the next step you've been, just wait to hear back from you?
I want to read the minutes.
Okay, so I mean, as far as getting a meeting together with Mr. Pelucci?
I'm gonna call him.
I have something to say about that. Mr. Pelucci, his first project, if I'm not mistaken, was a 12-lot subdivision, I think, Roger? It was 12 lots. It was the first meeting he had.
For what?
Because I was at that, for Justin's Way. He was gonna put in 12 lots.
He's gonna be 25.
It had a shared, it had a shared septic system.
I thought it was 25.
I don't remember 20, I remember 12, whatever.
Might have been 12 duplexes.
And they were resident, it was, excuse me, 25 acres?
No, might have been 12 duplexes and 25 lots. It was gonna be affordable housing.
Oh, okay, they were duplexes, whatever. He was at that meeting, he was, and he was talked, we addressed him about what he was gonna do for Fuller Shores Road. And he publicly stated that he was gonna work with us-
Yeah.
-to make sure that Fuller Shores Road would not be affected by this project. That was out of his mouth at that meeting. You can get the video if you want to get it, that was the first meeting that he had. Not the one that went, that finally got approved, that was the one that you guys shot down.
Yeah.
Or there was an issue, I think there was actually an issue with him actually having the right to even get into Fuller Shores Road. That's another issue that's above and beyond that we won't even talk about. Because that issue is-
Nothing to do with us.
No, I know, but he has no, he had no right to even attach Fuller Shores Road.
Yeah, that's what some people think.
He had no right to even do that.
Sounds, seems like he did have a right.
But, but land court let him do it, I mean, he went to court to do it.
For, for Justin's Way?
Some, you know, some, some judge allowed him to do it.
He bought the rights.
That's a, that's a way above our pay.
And now, he, he reduced it from 25 or whatever, down, and then down, and then down, into a combined septic system and, and all that stuff. And, and for whatever reason, he wasn't able to do that. And he got down to, I don't know how many lots are on that.
Really? But he did state at that meeting that he would help the residents, he would help the association with any issues that we have.
Okay. Well, I would like to close this meeting.
You got it.
Because I think we've spent enough time beating a dead horse. Well, it's close to being dead.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, discuss the March 22nd memo from Z-Watch guarding schedule, public hearings, board proposal, bylaws.
Amendments.
So, I spoke to Kathy and she said that she wanted to ask us to set a date, either the 11th or the 25th, depending on her, her advertising it. So, I, I contacted Rita and Rita said, no, we can't do it the 11th or the 26th, we have to do it. She said, they can't get enough days to advertise it.
For?
For the, to have the hearing.
Prep for the town meeting?
Yeah, she said, as long as we have it before the town meeting, it, it, so she's suggesting the next May, is it May? Would it be May? May. May 4th, maybe, May something?
Town meeting, it's been stretched to as far as first week of June, correct?
Yeah.
I'll be around May 4th.
Yeah, May 4th, and that's what you-
I won't be around May 4th.
Oh, you won't?
Oh, no, I'm gonna be in like Washington DC or something. And that's a Saturday, anyway.
Oh, I don't even know what day she said, but May, she wanted to do, push out.
Okay, there's May 9th?
Oh, so, we, these were actually too early. Oh, so we, these were actually too early. They weren't, um, cutting it too close. They were too, a little too early for her?
The eleventh definitely was too early for Kathy to get the, the add-in.
Right.
And we, Kathy was not sure about the twenty-fifth, so she asked if I'd ask you if you'd, uh, say either the eleventh or the twenty-fifth. But she had me call Rita and Rita got back to me while we were in the meeting and said neither one of those dates will work. You need to push it out.
Okay, that's very good because I don't think that we can schedule them without actually having the verbiage in front of us because it has to be in town hall, completely typed up. Because part of it is, if you want to, if you want to see the whole thing, go to town hall and read it. So, and we haven't, we haven't completed any of that yet. We don't have it written up yet.
She asked me to ask you to just vote on the date.
Okay.
Correct.
And we'll take care of the.
The, the verbiage will come in, before then.
As long as it's far enough out, that's good.
Yeah.
If it's next week, it's not good.
Rita felt this April was not, um.
Yeah.
It's not good.
Time enough.
Great. That's great because, go ahead.
So you're not around the first week of May?
We already have, we, we have a meeting scheduled to some degree, right? Um, so.
Do we?
Yeah.
What is it?
Uh, oh boy, I, I got it from, it's, it's in, it's, it's the two thousand nineteen meeting schedule. You want me to tell you which ones they are? I, I have it here. It'll take me a while, I find. Anyhow.
So, do you wanna wait to look at this?
I think it might be the ninth and the twenty-third, which is the second and the, um, fourth.
Of April?
Yes. Second and fourth, Thursday in April.
Okay.
So I'm guessing that's what it is.
It sounds about right.
April?
Um, May.
Okay.
Oh, May, good. Because Kathy, yeah, then Kathy has, on the twenty-third, she would have.
So she said we were able to actually say, um, you know, we could set a date for, two, two dates, depending on, uh, the advertising deadline.
Mm-hmm.
And then pick one. So I, I don't know if you wanna get, go that far or if you wanna wait.
Well, how about the first, how about the first Thursday in May? So that it's like splits it down the middle, you know?
The what?
The, that first meeting in, uh, May, uh, the ninth.
The ninth?
Okay, the ninth.
And if you wanted to say that's when the hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Zink, what do you think?
Sounds fine.
May ninth, it's over.
Without the verbiage, we can't, we can't schedule it anyways.
Right.
Yeah, but, uh, we had to bring it up at the meeting and so she could do it.
Yeah. So planning.
It, it, it's so, it's so you can come up with a deadline as far as like, um, the, the newspaper. And, and so we, yeah, that's good. May ninth.
May ninth, I'll let her know. We all agreed upon that. Okay. That's done. And now I guess we get to look at the, what, Zebra brought to us? Peter?
Mm-hmm. Well, that was what they brought. That, those meetings are for Zebra.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I didn't know if you wanted to go over anything with us, so I, I, I.
I want to go over one of them.
Go right ahead, Zink.
But, uh. Go for it. Um, no, the open space, uh, design one.
Oh, okay.
Is that, uh.
That's not on this.
What?
That's not going on this town meeting.
How do you know that?
Kathy told me.
Yeah, it is. It's taken out of the package. Like, it's at the very bottom of the front page, but it's, um, it's taken out of the, um, changes for this year.
I guess she spoke with Rita and.
No, there's four items and that one is gone.
Okay, well, I was, I was working on it for the last three days.
At the last selectmen meeting, they decided there wasn't enough time. The last selectmen meeting, they decided there wasn't enough time to do that issue.
They, uh, they weren't working on it.
How do you feel?
Yeah, well, speak, please, I wanna, I wanna hear it.
I can't talk better than camera, but I would say now. I worked on it for three days and nobody wants it.
Oh, they didn't, they didn't want it.
No, they didn't say they didn't want it.
They didn't say they didn't want it. I believe they just felt it was too much to put on this, 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 um, meeting. Upcoming town meeting.
They have, some of the other stuff that they want to put on, if, if you want to talk about that, is, uh.
I don't wanna talk about anything. I'm off the board.
Something, and somebody's just cracked.
I'm off the board as of today.
Really?
Yeah.
Who could vote it in?
Nobody got voted in, but my term ends April first.
No way.
Oh, yeah, right.
When's the election?
Remember we thanked you last, last week?
April second.
No, I wasn't here. I was in the hospital.
Peter.
I was in the hospital, sorry.
Yeah.
But I thank you.
Okay, we, we had a ceremony, not a ceremony.
Peter said, thanks, Jasper, everybody left.
That wasn't much of a tear.
Everyone left a lot.
Yeah, Peter goes, well, I just wanna thank you, Jasper. That's all you were.
Peter was very nice.
Yes, he was very nice.
Anyhow.
Anyhow. So, okay, so the open space bylaw. Here. There's a, this was twenty-one pages long. Remember Kate Goodrum from Serf Ed wrote it? It is now ten pages long.
I remember that. I remember she came to us.
And, uh, you know, with a lot of the notes taken out of it, there's nothing added to it. I didn't add anything to it. I, I, where there were numbers that they were looking for, I put some of the numbers in, uh, just for discussion. But in case you need some reading. There it is. Cutting something from twenty-one pages down to ten pages takes a long time and it's difficult to do.
You just got a head start on it, because I think it's coming back. You just, you just got a head start on it because it's coming back.
They said the fall, town meeting.
Yeah, it's coming bouncing.
I, again, I would say, how would they possibly know? We have no contact with them.
I don't either.
We've gotta fill them like, um, ground balls.
Okay, your turn, Peter. Let's see what happens to yours.
Well, so, um, some of the items, um, that we discussed at our zoning, um, bylaw review advisory committee, um, is, is basically, you know, once again, cleaning up of the zoning bylaws and, um, trying to make it easier and, and more streamlined for our building commissioner to do his job. And, uh, that's sort of, uh, one of the main purposes of the whole committee, you know? And not to, so that we don't lead the public astray when they come in and pull permits. And, uh, when they try to do the right thing, they're not, um, sent down the wrong path. Um, temporary licenses is one of them. And, um, basically, uh, we just struck through some of the, um, some of the verbiage that allows our building, uh.
Temporary licenses for trailers?
Trailers, uh, yeah, and storage boxes.
So what they doing with that?
Well, making it so that he can, uh, easily and not have to wait for selectmen's approval, um, he, he, he can grant a, uh, permit for, in situations of natural disaster, Holocaust fire, grant the, uh, permit for a, um, a, uh, trailer and/or storage locker on their property.
Isn't that permission to do that now?
At the current present time, no.
No, the selectmen do.
Yeah, trailers have to go through a selectmen meeting. And should it happen, like, say, the day after a selectmen's meeting, it could be two weeks, you know?
Yeah.
So, that streamlines this process. He doesn't have, uh, it, and it, it doesn't obviously, um.
That's great.
It's an easy one, you know, and it makes sense to everybody, the town and the people.
Yeah.
Um, grounds, large-scale ground-mounted so, solar votaic installations, solar farms, uh, as we know. And, um, changing some of the verbiage to, um, include, uh, how they're screened from the, uh, from the roads that they abut. This, this is obviously, uh, you know, more sensitive now than it was, you know, a couple of years ago, so. Third one, site plan review. Zink is, uh, well-versed in this and this will actually come, uh, to become helpful to us rather than hinder us. Uh, the site plan review residential procedure. Right now, we are at, um, let me, uh, let me go back here. I don't know if I have it in here. Basically, applicants for a building permit for new construction, when they disturb more than three thousand square feet. Well, every building permit disturbs more than three thousand square feet. You can't even cut in your driveway and not disturb that. That's gonna change, hopefully, to forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. And that gets you closer to reality and thus triggering us to take the, um, site plan review of residential version much more serious. You know, right now, because every house would require.
A site plan review.
A site plan review. This'll sort of differentiate some from others.
We, you do have to note though, that, uh, you know, this is a responsibility that's always been ours.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we've never executed it at all because it was obviously wrong. The, the three thousand wasn't correct and so we never wound up doing it. Now, if we announce that we do do it, that, a lot of the questions that we had tonight from the people that were sitting, uh, here, may have.
Very good questions.
Would have gone, will come directly to us because we will be taking that responsibility on. And without the ability to hold bonds, all we'll, all we'll be doing is, uh, just, just stepping into it and having an opinion, but we won't have any real teeth to it. So this is not that simple. The, the, this, this, this all grew out of the, uh, the stormwater discharge rules. And it's a, boy, it's a tough subject.
Yeah, the stormwater rules work for me than that.
Yeah.
Because we all have our own districts.
Yeah, yeah, but this is, this is waking up that, waking up that cat, waking up that, you know?
Right, you haven't done that for a while.
Yeah, so.
That's it? Those are the, um, those are the three items.
The marijuana?
Uh, not on our list.
That's on, it's not on the list yet.
She said only three were going on, that I, that she told me.
In other words, uh, we're, we're, we continue to be this special permitting, uh, board for a little longer.
Well, I was.
Until at least the fall.
I, I was, I was talking with the people at four fifteen Millennium because I was here at six o'clock for their, for their presentation, uh, and, uh, I gave them the forms.
No, that's, uh.
Yeah, it's, uh, and they, they had gone to the last meeting.
They're gonna get them anyhow.
They had come to the last meetings and they understood exactly what was going on during our meetings. And so that, that, and that's why I kept talking for until the cameras off. But they, they, they wanna be on their own because they, they have a different view of how the, uh, the permitting goes and, and I don't think there'll be any trouble at all as far as, you know, filling the stuff out.
Okay. But either, either way, we continue, uh, for another, um, nine months or so. Uh, but I have mixed feelings about that, I think.
That was a nice presentation they had, uh, this, you know, working with, with Jamie.
Oh, yeah. It definitely dresses up that.
Professional.
Definitely dresses up that beat-down building, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I'm done, Brian.
Okay, um, old business is, uh, an update on the notice of intent, layouts, et cetera. Really?
I guess she's waiting for a letter from town.
Consulting engineer, okay.
Has anyone called the consulting engineer?
I have not.
Has she?
I have, I have no idea.
I had no idea either. I would just, just in case.
But she says she's waiting for.
Let's hope he knows.
I'm sure.
I think Kathy would follow up if she.
Yeah, okay. And I'm sure if he, he asked, she would tell him.
Yeah, I, I went and inspected it myself. It looks beautiful. There's not a thing wrong with it.
New business, uh, correspondence from Millboro and Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission. That's gotta be in here somewhere.
Yeah, it's, um, handouts.
Okay, that's residential development on, um, on, um, Island Terrace.
Right.
I, sorry, I was reading out loud. When, when do they, um, when do they come back, Janice? Do you know when, uh, people from Island Terrace are coming back? To revisit this?
I, I don't know because, uh, I don't know where it stands with, um, going to court, um.
Oh, Taunton, both Taunton and New Bedford took them to court.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
So I, I remember.
So it could be.
It could be a long time.
Depends on pressure.
Yes.
The gentleman that wanted to develop it, if you remember, he wanted it to go quickly and he felt if he couldn't get it in quickly, I think he indicated he might pull out, uh, the guy that owns, um, the very real station.
We have to remember the last developer we ever met that wasn't in a hurry. Do you know of one?
They're actually saying it from last year's.
Yeah.
Years.
Years, yeah.
Okay.
Do they make money by going slow?
Uh, what about the community outreach? Is that the same thing?
That was the, that was the folks that were here.
Oh, those guys, right?
Yes. And, and that's how come I stopped rolling because I thought maybe there'd be a whole community here.
Yeah.
But.
This was the community outreach meeting, just right now?
No, it was before our meeting.
The guys that were here for the marijuana plant.
But what happened?
Was anybody there?
I didn't know that.
I don't know that.
No, the people from, the people from across the street, the, that, uh.
Oh, the RV dealership?
No, no, the sushi place.
Oh, Saga?
Yeah.
Did they show up?
They showed up, three of them, uh, and they were very nice.
The business is gonna go through the roof.
Yes, it's true. Oh, my gosh.
Why wouldn't they?
But anyway.
But that was before our meeting.
No, and I had a.
I wish I had known. I probably would have just came earlier.
Yeah, all right.
Maybe get some sushi.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I got to watch this dog and pony show twice tonight.
You missed out, Peter.
All right.
Okay, our next meeting is, uh, April eleventh. And then, um, you may be able to have an opportunity to listen to Zink speak once the cameras turned off. Someone wants to make a motion to.
Adjourn?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All okay though?
Aye.
Aye.